Called to order this meeting for Monday, May, or excuse me, Monday, May 26th. Carl, give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Present.
Lunsman.
Here.
Reif.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Bunsonus.
Present.
Olson.
Present.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shawman. Here, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business will be to approve last week's events for the city council meeting on May 18th. Can I get a motion to do that, please?
Sub moved.
Second.
And a motion from Rux and a second from Lunsman. Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye, motion does carry. Next we've got open forum. We'll start with Clark Theres, who's here to talk about pool operations. Clark, make sure the little green light is on the microphone there so that we can hear you, and then the floor is yours.
I'll make my comments brief. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Clark Theres and I'm here to request that the city reconsider opening the pool for the summer. Before I begin, I want to thank Travis Lemar, Lemar, excuse me, Lemar, Aquatic Center manager and his staff for their efforts throughout the years in creating a very safe and enjoyable environment for our youth. Of course, our family and many other families I have spoken to are disappointed about the possibility of the pool not opening this summer. I know one of the concerns was the financial aspect, which I can understand. But in speaking with Carl Albert, City Finance Officer, the city is sitting on nearly $7 million in reserve. As a taxpayer, I find it hard to understand why the city cannot appropriate $70,000 to cover any shortfalls for this year. Lynn Landers, City Manager, informed me that at present, the March sales tax revenues are above projections. I know in speaking with Mark Hoven and Travis Lemar, they have a game plan in place, although I presume not perfect, one that will ensure the safety and enjoyment as they have in the past. I feel we need to trust in their plan. I have two special needs children. My son, who has Down Syndrome, has had four open heart surgeries in his short life, and we, as his parents, have his best interest at heart. The special needs families, along with other families we have spoken with, would like to see the pool open. Many don't have the opportunity to participate in the other summer sports, like soccer, baseball, et cetera. This is where they hang out with their friends. I would prefer my children swim in a clean chlorinated water in a safe environment rather than at Wiley Lake, where there is no supervision, and if your concern is reasonable social distancing, which I understand, it would definitely not be practiced there. I will leave you with a quote from the movie Scent of a Woman, where Al Bocino is defending his friend. There was a time I could see, boys like these, younger than these, their arms torn out, their legs ripped off, but there is nothing like the sight of an amputated spirit. There is no prosthetic for that. Please don't amputate the spirit of these kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Clark. Next, we've got Casey Wiseman, here to present the Convention and Visitors Bureau first quarter activities. Casey, make your way to the counter, make sure the green light is on, make sure that everything is wiped up appropriately, and you will have the floor. Thank you for joining us and telling us about the activities of the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Yeah, good evening, everybody, and everybody listening at home. I appreciate you all tuning in for this exciting adventure we're about to go down.
For what enjoy hearing your reports, Casey.
The Convention and Visitors Bureau first quarter recap for 2020. We wanted to thank you for allowing us to come present and offer that information to you. We are here not only as good times and bad times, the office is extremely busy, looking at January and February, were two strong months for Aberdeen. March started out a really strong month for Aberdeen, and then it quickly fizzled out due to COVID-19 and social distancing. The closing of restaurants, the closing of entertainment, attractions, sporting events, conventions, meetings, you name it, the city of Aberdeen and the Convention and Visitors Bureau office has been affected by this. Not exciting times, by no means, you know, the staff of the CVB, extremely busy, working those conventions, trying to bring new events to Aberdeen. Like I said, it's trying times because even if you want to bring something to Aberdeen, you don't necessarily have the facility or the dates to host that event. We have been busy working reunions, conventions, sporting events, conferences and meetings, not only working to bring them to Aberdeen, but when the phone rings and we get that fateful phone call that an event is being canceled, or at the best case scenario postponed, we immediately go into scramble mode and to see what we can do to try to salvage that business. What can we do to entice them to bring their event or to keep their event in Aberdeen, but maybe postpone that at a later date? And like I said, we don't always have that luxury when you're dealing with seasonal attractions, when you're dealing with events and sporting events and fine arts that are held during certain times of the year, they don't have the luxury to always reschedule that stuff. So, the office has been very busy organizing that information, tracking that information, and doing what we can to salvage that information. I did provide a quarterly report to all the city council members, Mayor Shawman and Lynn, I believe, has this as well. Just to highlight, this is kind of the format I'd like to provide that information to you moving forward. I think it's beneficial that you guys have this information at the ready. I know it's quite lengthy at times, but this information is important, and I want to make sure that you guys have all the information that we're tracking as well. Starting off, you know, kind of explains a little bit who we are and what we do, but the biggest thing I want to get into immediately is our social media promotions. There's goals that are set forth each year by the city council or self-imposed goals by the CVB for promotional fund requesting, and I want you guys to know that we're trying our darnedest to hit those goals and exceed those goals every year. So if you're looking at quarter one for social media engagement, our Facebook is up 6%, Instagram 18%, Twitter 3%. On the hunt fish side of things, increased Facebook 3%, Instagram 9%, and Twitter .4. I guess social media is working for Aberdeen. It's a platform that's free to use, and why not take advantage of it to promote what we have to offer and to entice those travelers and visitors to come to Aberdeen. Along with that, we get into the website statistics. For quarter one, we saw 5,200 users, 5,000 of them being new users for our website for the first quarter, 17,000 page views, almost 7,000 sessions. How are they finding us? Directly, organically, and social media are the three platforms, the three big platforms, how they're engaging, Visit Aberdeen SD and Hunt Fish SD. What are they searching for when they come after us? They're looking for events, they're looking for something to do in Aberdeen. And again, rewinding my statement earlier, those events are hard to provide at the moment, but they're searching for events. We entice them with our 2021 giveaway. Plan now, play later, is our kind of our platform. We want to entice them to research that information on Aberdeen and try to capture what information they're looking for. We know they can't play right now, but we want them to plan their vacation to Aberdeen and play later, play later this year or play later next year. Other pages that are getting hit pretty heavily, submit your events, calendar of events information as Aberdeen, CVB is the keeper of the calendar of events, that's a big one for us. And then eat, looking to eat out. The CVB put out a big promotion about the restaurants that are open for dine-in and delivery, and that went over huge. That was our way to give to those businesses that support the triple B funding as well, along with our responsibility to make sure that people can capture that information and keep those restaurants open. First quarter, male or female, male sought us out more than the ladies did. Usually it's the other way around, ladies are usually planning that vacation. Other interests of people capturing, other interests that people might have while they're looking to look for that information on the CVB, they have interest in food and dining, shopping, banking and finance, beauty and wellness, but shopping comes up. Shopping and food and dining come up pretty heavily, and I think Aberdeen has some very unique opportunities, especially on the food side of things, and with the unique boutiques we have downtown Main Street and along Sixth Avenue, and all of them scattered throughout Aberdeen, we got some very unique shopping opportunities. And they're reaching out to us via desktop. Mobile is a very close second, but they're reaching out to us via desktop, and that's the website statistics. I did cover the social media aspect a little bit. Some of our big performers for social media, the CVB has been very heavily getting involved in video, and video placement and video promotion. We just think that that's a freebie, again, that we can utilize on social media to promote Aberdeen and to entice visitors to engage in that two or three minute video, to see something, an attraction or event happening, you know, me and my family, we can come do this as well, something that they can relate to. So we're utilizing that quite a bit. Top performers on social media was a little video we shot at Levity, it was just the staff having a quick little fun lunch break, shoot a video while we're there, was our top engagement. Our restaurant promotion that I mentioned earlier, our 2021 hunting giveaway and our 2021 CVB cabin vacation bundle giveaway is another top performer. Social media is strong, but then we also do print media as well, and without getting into specifics there, we're going after the big hitters, we're going after that three to five hour radius of Aberdeen is strong for us. Women's Day, Good Housekeeping, Of the Minds and Moms, South Dakota Magazine, 605 Magazine, AAA Living, Area Women Magazine, Iowa Sportsman, Adventure Outdoors Magazine, Midwest Hunting and Fishing, along with an email newsletter that we send out anywhere from two to three times a month, I hope you guys all engage in that as well, but we get a 20% open rate on our email newsletter. That's pretty good. That's actually really good, and I commend the staff for doing that, they've been doing a great job. Some of the big events and conferences that we were hoping to host for the first quarter, we did pull some of these through, indoor soccer tournament, Snow Queen Festival, swim meets, eight ball pool, Pee Wee Hockey, varsity, girls varsity hockey, Aberdeen Ag Expo, Home Builders Show, but then there was also on the flip page, the page I didn't want to show you, the events that we lost, the Aberdeen or the Region Two AAU Wrestling Tournament was supposed to be held in Aberdeen. The big one actually was supposed to be held next year as well, but we got bumped a couple years because Rapid City was supposed to host the AAU State Tournament this year, they got bumped to 2021, Sioux Falls was supposed to host 2022, hoping we could slide into that spot, we got bumped from there as well because they have contracts put in place at the Pentagon Center, so the big state tournament we're hoping will happen in 2023. But we still have to, again, secure those facilities and secure those dates in order to host that event. State B Boys Basketball, the Y Tournament, Northern Women's Conference, those are all some big events that unfortunately didn't get held because of situations that are out of our control. Other conventions that were hitting, so like I said, we're not letting the grass grow underneath us and we're not spinning our wheels by no means, but I told the staff the best thing we could do to help right this COVID situation is to have events on the books once this is over with. So we've been working diligently to secure future events, whether it's still for 2020 or 2021, all the way out to 2025. We have events on the books, and they're big ones, they're events that involve quite a bit of planning and eventually end up as a citywide sellout. So I encourage you to look at that as well, I can go over some of these if you'd like, but there's some big events on there that we're hoping to still capture for this year, otherwise try to immediately book for future years. Getting into the Hotel Alliance, I have the funding request allocations from the Hotel Alliance, South Dakota Special Olympics, the Aberdeen Civic Symphony, Western Pro-Am, baseball tournament, Pheasants Forever BMX, 2021 BMX Nationals, so we're actually bidding for next year as well. Midwest Regionals Water Ski Show, Celtic Fair, AAU Wrestling Tournament, Nights at Columbus, bull riding at the Expo Center, Clay Target Championship, Dakota Cups, Dakota Bank Soccer, and the Trappers Association. Funding requests so far for the first quarter is roughly about $63,000 that the Hotel Alliance has put out. But the biggest piece of paper that I wanted you guys all to be aware of is the canceled events due to COVID-19, and here again, this is our staff tracking these events that we have no control over, events that we put in hard time and hard effort to bid and to entice and to bring those events to Aberdeen, and unfortunately because of COVID-19 and social distancing, these events are either postponed or canceled. But what we wanted to do for the best benefit for the city and for the promotional funds that you guys allocate us, is we wanted to track the information, and we wanted to track the economic impact that some of these events bring to Aberdeen, and you can see totaling, actually this is an old list because we lost a few other ones, the Midwest Water Ski and the Dakota Bank Soccer Tournament, so they're not on here, but you're looking at a total list of roughly about $7 million in economic impact for the first quarter. These are events that are lost that unfortunately we can't bring back for 2020. We can try to postpone them if we can, but again, calendar date, facility availability, the best thing we can do is try to get these on the books as quick as possible for 2021 and future years. But the money that's spent here in Aberdeen also multiplies three to seven times. So when you're not hosting an event, there's less, there's less steaks that are grilled at Maverick's, there's less eggs that are beaten at Sammy's, there's less hotel rooms, bed spreads that are made, and those are all things that can be measured, that can add up. And unfortunately, this is a piece of paper that I wish we didn't have to look at, but unfortunately we do. So the amount of effort that the staff of the CVB puts into bidding an event and bringing that event to Aberdeen, we now have to pause, try to salvage that business and unravel all that work that we just put forward, and we're unraveling all the work that we put into that event for no gain, and that's sad. I hate to see that because I love Aberdeen and I like to see Aberdeen grow. I love it when it's a citywide sellout and the lines at Wendy's are out the door and people are upset because traffic is busy on Sixth Avenue, I love that stuff, so. SIC codes, again, us tracking information, right now we're sitting at about 20%, behind last year at this time, and this is city tax reported by specific SIC codes, so you have lodging, eating, and drinking. And again, those are hard numbers, unfortunately they're numbers we have to look at. Occupancy tax, like I said, January was right on par for last year, February was just below last year, and then March was about half of what last year was, and that's a $2 tax that a visitor pays when they stay in a hotel room, so that is the out of town traveler. Every time you can add up those $2, that's one hotel room that's rented, and you know, unfortunately, looking at 13,000 for the month of March, that's 14,000 behind last year at this time, that's a difference of 7,146 hotel rooms or 238 hotel rooms per day that we were down. And again, those are numbers I don't like to look at, but they're there. Information that we received through Arrivalist, through South Dakota Tourism, I love this little report that they give us, they break it down for January, February, and March. Again, it tells the amount of time that was spent by a resident and non-resident in Aberdeen, and how much time was spent in South Dakota. It tells us where they visit from, Sioux Falls, Minneapolis, Fargo, Rapid, Minot, Bismarck, Lincoln, Hastings, but then it also tells us where they're stopping on their way home, so where they're cross pollinating their visit in South Dakota. And again, that's an important message because that might be a billboard that we may or may not put up, that might be a target area that we may or may not look upon for digital advertising, so this, again, another strong report from South Dakota Tourism. And then the other, the last little bit of report that I have from South Dakota Tourism is just some safe practices. I received this from them and I forwarded this on to Mark Hoven and Dawn Thorstensen with Wiley Park and Stroebukland, and it's just the desired practices for commercial public places, hand sanitizer, disinfected wipes, cleaning activity, these are the things that give the visitors the warm fuzzies that Aberdeen is doing its part to make sure that they're safe when they come to visit. And like I said, I forwarded that on to them, I said, use this for however you feel, if you want to throw it away, that's fine, but there's some valuable information in here, so. With that, I gave you guys kind of a brief overview of the first quarter, like I said, I wanted to make sure that you guys had this information, excuse me, in hand and at the ready, and I guess if anybody has any information or questions, I would love to try to entertain them. Yes, Clint?
So, last week we got our possible projections.
Yes.
For what we could be short.
Yep.
And it sounds like you guys are trying to work really hard for next year and the years after. Basically, you know, what is your pitch if we do have to start cutting?
What is my pitch if we have to start cutting? I'd like to think that the CVB is probably the mainstay that you guys should or should not cut. I say that not because we represent that, but it is the marketing agency for the city. We are the ones out there meeting those guests face to face at travel shows, we're the ones answering the phones, we're the ones booking hotel rooms and room blocks and room rates, we're the ones that are bidding these conventions and these citywide sellouts to try to bring those events to Aberdeen, we're the ones, we're the primary resource that helps refill that promotional fund. So if anything, I would hope you wouldn't cut us at all. If anything, I would like to see you guys fund us more, and I know the understanding of that and why that won't happen or can't be, but I guess the biggest thing I could request is, is don't hurt the organization that's helping you the most as far as refilling the promotional fund, and I say that with all due respect to the other entities that request funding, nothing against them, but we are the sole designated organization to help bring in those outside dollars to the community to help refill that budget. And I flirted with that a little bit when I said, you know, that's less steaks that are being grilled at Maverick's, and that's less eggs that are being broken at Sammy's. If we don't help bring in those outside visitors, those are less jobs in Aberdeen. That's less revenue, that's more household property tax you may have to pay in the future, you know? And us being the primary organization to help offset that or to help refill that promotional funding, I just look upon it, it's our job to try to write this as quick as possible, and I need the resources to do that. We've been kind of smart in our respect that we understand the vacation traveler is probably not going to happen for this year, this summer, or not to the extent that we expect it. You know, when we see that vacation, I was out at Wiley Park and Stroebukland this weekend and the campground was packed, you couldn't find another spot to park a vehicle if you wanted to, and that's great, you know, some of those were Aberdonians and some of those were out of town license plates, out of state plates, and that's good. But with that being said, is those, those visitors that come here are coming here for a purpose, obviously, and it's up to us to help market to those visitors to bring them, so.
Do you think that, and because I was reading an article where they say people who are traveling are going to be more in-state rather than traveling, you know, beyond state lines, do you think that that maybe might be an opportunity?
I think that's going to benefit us, actually, and with that being said, I'm glad you brought that up because, like I said, that vacation or that peak traveler, we may not see that to the extent that we are accustomed to, the long lines and here and there, you know, we might not see that comfortability until July, mid-July, early part of July at the earliest, and as we know, you know, come August and Brown County Fair, we make the hard switch from vacation to the Brown County Fair into hunting and fishing. Aberdeen makes that hard switch. We don't have the luxury like other destinations where they have that gray area, that soft transition from peak to shoulder season. So with that being said, we have actually taken a different approach, knowing that we've, we're probably going to miss the boat on some of that vacation traveler, so we're looking to reach out to our advertising mediums and say, what can you put together for 2021? And what can we do to contract with you possibly this year? Because unfortunately, we know our budget might be cut next year, you know, and so we might have limited resources as far as advertising goes, and I hope that doesn't happen, I try to be very respectful in our ask for promotional funds for 2021. I, as you guys know, I've always tried to be very respectful in our ask, and I think it's, I just don't want to hinder our department and I don't want to hinder Aberdeen by not being able to connect with those visitors.
Sounds good. Is there any other questions for Casey while he's here? We did great, Casey, and I think those were really valid points about you being responsible to bring in those dollars to continue to fund this thing moving forward, so appreciate you having brought that up.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We will move right along to old business, first quarter business, and our old business category is to appoint Joseph Gah as the city manager upon the June 19th retirement of our current city manager Lynn Landers. Possible approval to appoint Mr. Gah as the manager for a term starting June 22nd at a beginning compensation of $150,000 per year and authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement with Mr. Gah. Jill, are you with us here tonight?
Yes, I am, and I think you just covered everything. I apologize that we didn't get that employment contract sent out last week, but you should have all received that, and that would be the proposal is for the council to appoint Joseph A. Gah, the city manager for an indefinite term starting on June 22nd, and then authorize the mayor to execute the employment agreement with Mr. Gah, setting forth the terms and conditions that are listed in the employment agreement.
We'll approve.
So we've got a motion from Ronain and a second from Bunsonus to authorize and to appoint. If anyone have any questions for Jill while she's with us here about the contract or about anything else dealing with Jill Gah, otherwise, Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson. Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next we've got consent calendar, we've got items A through D, there is a small adjustment brought to us by Brett Bill, under item B, the second item will be removed, the Refuge Retreats addition, so strike that from your list, and with the exception of that, I would like to take a motion to approve these. motion to approve these consent calendar items.
So moved, second.
I've got a motion from Rux and a second from Remley. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Olson. Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got new business. We've got the first item to be discussed is discussion of possible first reading of passage of Resolution Number 200505R, extending ordinance 200405, also known as the COVID-19 Emergency Ordinance Number Three. This will be a possible approval of this resolution.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Bunsoness and a second from Rux. Uh, anyone have anything to add on this extension of this ordinance? I have been receiving a lot of feedback from the healthcare professionals about how, um, uh, many of them feel like it's not helping their cause to have face masks and that they think that, you know, whether they should be able to, uh, should be determined by, uh, their customers or whether they should wear a mask could be determined by their customers. I would submit that as maybe a talking point today and maybe something to consider throughout the course of the week, uh, for maybe a vote or an, uh, red, uh, something to consider to be struck maybe next week.
I don't think we're requiring customers to wear masks.
These are not the customers. It's the hair care professionals are having a challenging time. I can forward you some of the correspondence if you'd be interested in listening. I will assume that they're, uh, tell me the truth on their issues with that. Um, so we've got a motion from Bunsoness and a second from Ronane, I believe. Uh, Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson. Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
No, motion does carry. Next, we've got-
I'm an aye, by the way, Carl. I apologize. I mute on. Thank you.
Uh, next, we've got Resolution 200506R, accepting the dedication of essential public facilities in the Centennial Common Subdivision from the developer Aberdeen Development Corporation. Possible approval of this resolution and Robin is here to speak to us about that.
You have the request for council action in front of you. Um, the typical way we do things with this is the improvements are made by the developer, in this case, the Aberdeen Development Corporation. The improvements have been made to the city standards and we recommend acceptance by the city to dedicate these improvements to the public for future use.
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion from Rux and a second from Lunsman. Does anyone have any questions for Robin while he's here or else? Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Olson. Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the recommendation on the 2020 through 2021 fuel purchases, possible approval to purchase fuels off state contracts for this area for the Public Works Department. Robin, tell us about the fuel purchase contract.
We have, for the last many years, been purchasing our fuel off of the state contract process. Uh, it's a little bit later this year. The state did extend those contracts for a couple of months because of the COVID-19 issue. Uh, they now have the contracts out there and both, uh, vendors, Harms Oil and Agtager have approved or have agreed to do their, uh, supply as per the state contract to the city of Aberdeen. So we recommend approval of that.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Johnson and a second from Lunsman. Uh, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson. Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the payment. Number six Aberdeen Public Safety Generator, Quest Construction, $5,099.92. Possible approval of the payment, request number six in the amount of that, $5,099.92 to Quest for work on the Public Safety Generator Project. Robin, tell us about that.
Once again, you have the, uh, request for council action in front of you. This is the final payment to Quest for the work. Uh, it has met the standards, uh, by the designer, uh, Metler Sickmiller. I talked to the chief. Uh, he's okay with how things are completed and we recommend approval of the final payment to Quest.
Moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Johnson and a second from Rux. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Olson. Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the bills. The approval for the bill list May 26, 2020, as seen in your packet, there is one small addition. The addition is for the CBB April occupancy tax. The payment is for $10,154.76 to the CBB. Can I get a motion to pay those bills?
Moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Lunsman and a second from Remley. Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson. Bunsoness.
Abstain.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronane.
Abstain.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Abstain, motion does carry. Next, we've got the payroll. Approval for the pay period from May 10th, 2020 through May 23rd, 2020 and for the city's share of social security, old age and survivors insurance, retirement, health and life insurance. Can I get a motion to make the payroll?
Moved.
Second. Got a motion from Lunsman and a second from Johnson. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Olson. Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the city managers' report. Lynn, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Uh, later part of this afternoon, I put out a memorandum and I would like to highlight parts of this memorandum that I sent out to the city council. Uh, within the last week, I've been asked by various different individuals if the city has sufficient reserves to fund the predicted operational losses for the year 2020 if the pool was to be open. Uh, many of the park and recreational activities aren't considered essential services of the city. Essential services in my mind would be police and fire services, water distribution and sewer collection. However, many of the park and recreation opportunities are considered quality of life issues within the city. The city currently has adequate reserves to fund a modified pool operational plan that may bring for 2020 operational losses. City reserves can be used for this unique, non-recurring city expense, in my opinion. The impacts of COVID-19 have been anything but normal. It is my duty each year to prepare and submit the annual budget and capital outlay program to the city council, which is adopted by September 30th of each year. However, the city council must authorize the transfer of additional cash from the general fund reserves to make the predicted shortfall if, in fact, you were to open the pool. I do not retain the authority to do this transaction based upon charter provisions and state statute. And actually, uh, Mr. Theres made reference to that this evening. I am happy to report within this memorandum, when I went back and I looked at the history of the unallocated general fund balance, when I started, that fund balance was only $2,800,000. As of beginning of the year, it was 6.5 million. Keep in mind that we do need cash flow for monthly operations, too.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So Lynn-
Yeah, my question would be, Lynn, is, is what are you looking for from us? Um, because I, I recognize that the Parks Board would be the one to, um, have to vote on authorizing to open the pool. Are you looking for us in this, uh, to, to okay you transferring the funds or what are you looking for?
Uh, Carl, you can help me with that if you would because most of the time, the funds for the pool are transferred within the fall. And we know if, in fact, if you want to go forward with pool operations, there would have to be additional dollars within the transfer. And so Carl, would you need a straight motion to put that within the supplement that would come out within the fall?
Because the transfer from the general fund to the Parks and Recreation Fund is done by the budget ordinance in, uh, September of 2019, we would need to have another ordinance with two readings to allow additional funds to be transferred from the general fund to the Park and Recreation Fund to make up for any shortfall.
So how would that occur, uh, in terms of, of vote then? Carl, could you explain that to us?
Uh, there would be a motion and a second to pass an ordinance to increase the transfer from the general fund to the Parks and Recreation Fund. Um, first reading would be potentially next week. Uh, second reading could potentially be the following week with publication three days after that and then 20 days after publication, it would be effective.
Here, here's another question on process, Carl. Uh, we routinely do, how do you say? Budget transfer ordinances throughout the year, correct? That shortfall could be included in any one of them or would you feel that, you know, they need, we need to do this first to fund the operations?
We do usually two supplementing ordinances during the year. One we try and do in May, that's going to be a little late this year. Uh, it's been a busy May, uh, and the other October, and then the final one is in December. Uh, that increase in, uh, budgeted transfer could be increased at either of those or separately.
Also, uh, in the email we got from Lynn Lander about the special park board meeting, uh, Mark Hoven, uh, did, I think, a good job in finding $70,000 in cuts to certain things that would not directly impact operational issues. So we would have time if you felt even we needed to move forward with an ordinance first? Or do you still think that, hey, we can just take care of this at one of the September or the?
There's the two issues involved here. One is the budgetary authority to expend for pool operations. That budgetary authority is in place with the adoption of the September ordinance. Um, the second thing that we're looking at is when, uh, we adopt the budget, we're adopting a certain amount of revenue and a certain amount of expenditures. And if the pool revenues aren't there, that means at the end of the year, the cash balance in the Parks and Recreation Fund would be short. That's what that budget transfer in essence takes care of.
So Carl, what is the, what is the thing that is voted upon that gives, um, Northern State University and the Boys and Girls Club and so forth, some reassurance that the council intends to honor, uh, a payment of some sort in the future?
Earlier, we had passed a resolution, I know in particular with the Northern State University Capital Campaign, passed a, a resolution that we would provide the funding at a certain level over so many years. Um, and I think we went back and did that with the Boys and Girls Club, too. I know we talked about it. Um, the city attorney drew it up. That's why I'm drawing a blank.
We, we did it for both of those.
For both that and-
And we did it for the BMX also.
Right, yeah. Any of those, there's a resolution in place that said, says that the council intends to fund those throughout the length of that term. Um, however, of course, the, the council can't bind future councils, but there is that resolution of intent in place.
So I wonder, as a, as a method of good faith and giving the park board some assurance that they could vote on this issue without the budgetary issue, uh, over their heads, is that something that we could, uh, pass, uh, vote upon tonight? A resolution which would, um, provide for a, a funding, uh, in a, in the case of a shortfall for this season's activities?
That's when I would refer to legal counsel.
Typically, in order to vote on something, it has to be on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Has to be noticed. It has to be on the agenda. Not going to happen tonight. I have a question for Lynn and, uh, Carl. If we have so many dollars of reserve, why did we, um, stop a project? Why did we not go ahead with projects and whatever we heard a couple of weeks ago that you were doing to prepare, uh, for the shortfall of sales tax? If we had the reserves, why didn't we just spend them?
Dave, that's a good question and you know that I can't predict the future.
Uh, exactly.
I, I'm trying to do the work within reason of what I have. And I was just asked the question, were there adequate reserves? Yes, you could determine whether or not you think that's a priority for the city. Uh, I determined, uh, when COVID-19 started that, uh, we needed to make cutbacks even before we saw the outcomes to be on the safe side.
I agree with those cutbacks and I agree with the park board making the decision, not just financially, there were other reasons to keep the pool closed this summer. We do not know the impact of this yet. So if we're not going to, if we're, I mean, if you're going to open up the reserves, then, uh, open it up for everything. Have Lynn start, uh, and Robin do that project. If you're not concerned about it.
Dave, this is a $7.5 million facility or more that we're sidelining because of a hundred thousand dollar potential shortfall. Um, I think that-
Oh, there's more reasons than that. There's more reasons than that. Did you, I mean, they, they had other concerns regarding this.
Josh, Josh, were you at the meeting?
Yes, I was. Um, and the, the main concerns, number one was, was budgetary, but as, as Councilman Bunsoness also pointed out, there were some delivery concerns. What I mean by that is, um, people coming to the pool and not being able to get in and, and making sure things were clean and, and the, and the way that, having to shut down for an hour in between the two sessions. Um, I will give Travis Lamar a lot of credit. He, he has a plan in place. Um, Mark, are you on tonight?
Me? You talking to me?
Mark.
No, Mark, Mark Hoven.
Yep, I'm here.
Um, Mark, do you want to, do you want to talk a little bit about the, the meeting? I don't want to speak, uh, on, on behalf of the board, but they did have a number of concerns. If you want to address those, um, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I, you know, obviously the budgetary concerns were first and then the second, you know, we went into the next thing, which is again what Josh had shared, the, just the logistics of what we'd have to do to, to have people into the aquatic center, the two sessions, uh, the comments I received from people that were even supportive of the aquatic center were saying that they did not cherish the idea of standing in a parking lot for an hour or so trying to get into the aquatic center when it's full. Um, and then of course, safety is another issue and the social distancing. But right now, the real big one is staffing, you know, we, uh, Travis, as he started his season, had, um, just shy of 20 guards on, on staff and he has lost since then. We, once the vote came through the board, we obviously released our employees and told them they needed to find work because the pool would not be open. Uh, he had 36 guards last year to run pool operations, so, um, and we're less than 20 guards and so, um, that alone is going to be, I won't say it's nuclear, but it's certainly going to be a, a, a major hill that we'd have to crawl over to try to even open. And right now, opening date would be June 24th, um, of this year. So you're pushing where you may have four or five, six weeks of operations if we're fortunate enough to get it going by then and find staff. Um, so there's a lot of reasons the board worked on and, and it was not an easy to come around decision. We've been in this since first part of March. And again, every aquatic center in the state is down and, uh, of the major cities. Uh, Brookings is down, Watertown, Huron, Mitchell, Sioux Falls, Rapid City, Spearfish. They're all down and it's for the, a lot of the same reasons that we're down as well.
Those other major cities, Mark, are not going to open at all this year?
I do not believe so. We had a conference call this morning with them again at 10:30 and I think they're in the same mode, you know, they're, um, Huron's council, I think, votes next week, Monday, um, but their recommendation from the board is not to open and I think Watertown's council is voting tonight and that-
Mark, did the, did the board vote on this matter or did they come to an agreement that did not involve a vote?
By general consensus, they, they, they informed us that they wish us to not open the pool. And it was pretty much 6-0.
Even if we did say yes, we could expend the money, there's no guarantee you have enough people to really truly open and do it safely and efficiently.
Well, and the problem would be you dump water into the pool and you go through all that. If you can't get the staff up and get it running, it's just, I mean, it's just going to be money that's going to be going out that you're never going to get back. It, the staffing thing is really right now is, is, is one of our, would be a major concern.
Mark, do we have an expense associated with the pool even if it does not open? Or is it a $0 line item for us?
Okay, well, there will be ongoing expenses, obviously. We will have to maintain what we have. We're going to have to obviously pay utilities. We're obviously going to have to, you know, mow the grass and do all those things. There'll be some ongoing expenses to the pool even if it's down. We have placed it in winter mode, just so you know. We filled the, the lap pool about halfway, which is the normal mode. And we have also begun winter shutdown on the pool. So.
Mark, I think you were in the article, it quoted you at approximately $10,000 to $15,000 of ongoing maintenance.
Yeah, that's pretty close, we think, based on utilities and based on, you know, on, on some salaries there. Yeah. It may be less than that, but it's probably the utilities will be the one thing that will be there for us to deal with. So.
So I spoke to several members of the Parks Board who assured me that, that they would have voted to open the pool had the financial concern not been there. Would it make sense for us to give them some sort of a reassurance that the city would be interested in paying the difference and then allow them to make a decision based on health only and not the budgetary component of things so that they're able to salvage what's the remainder of this season as quickly as possible before we get too far behind?
You know, it's not on our agenda, Mayor. We aren't, we are not in position to have a vote on some resolution that you want to bring up today at 6:23.
I guess my question is, is if the park or the, the board would have thought that this was their answer, why aren't one of them here or online or somewhere to try to get that money or say, hey, yes, we would if, if you opened the purse strings? I don't see that. Is there a reason for that? Does anybody have an answer? Maybe I'm just-
I think it's a good point.
Do you vote each year, Mark, to open the pool or this was just kind of an extenuated circumstance? Normally, the parks would just open-
Obviously, we, we don't open, we don't vote to open the pool each year, but obviously special circumstances this year, knowing that, you know, that the COVID thing had, would, would play into this just from the safety standpoint alone and then into our revenues as well. And then with the, just what was going on, not only in our state, again, you gotta, if you go, if you search out, there's a ton of these aquatic centers that are going down for the same reasons. It's just a difficult thing right now. But you know, I think the board did get a due diligence. They, they looked at it very hard. We had a lot of conversations and interchanges. So it was not a decision that came easy nor lightly, but one that they felt was the right decision to make. So.
Well, I think we can quit talking about this now. I, I think Mark just made the statement that they did the right thing and they worked hard at making that right decision. And I think we need to save the money and save as much as we can.
I know in talking, I, I had a nice conversation with Mr. Prehn, the park board president last, last Friday. It was, it was a nice lengthy conversation. And he brought many of the same concerns that Mr. Hoven did tonight and same thing with Josh, that, you know, financial was one reason, but it wasn't the only reason. I did, however, tell him that, you know, Mark came to the table with 70 grand and I told him that also. And that if, that, if they felt that that cut was fine, that guess what? You know, we realize that there's going to be this throughout every department with decreased revenues on, on certain things. So I said that, you know, as long as the 70 grand is, is cut, that we as a city, I felt could match the rest. But he had numerous other concerns that just was not about the money. They, they had a good plan. The, the why was closed, so they didn't have their lifeguard training. So they're short lifeguards, but they can't do the training, you know, because, because of certain situations. So where do you get the lifeguards? You have to have so many lifeguards to open the pool. He had the same concerns about people standing in line, not being able to get in, especially if they've driven from a distance. You know, what type of thing does that have? You know, you're having teenagers and college kids telling adults to social distance with their kids. I mean, there's a whole slew of issues going on, but I, I still defer to the park board because under state law, this is their decision. And, and if we, if they made that decision and they're comfortable with that decision, that's the route that we have to go. And, and if they change their mind, they can come to us at any point and we can work out the, how do you say, the budgetary issues. But I, I, if they make that decision, I, I support the decision they made, whether it was either way. Because that's what we, and they as volunteers, you have to remember, these are volunteers, that they made that decision.
Mark, what would have been the closing date for this season's?
Typically, the second week in August, right around the Brown County Fair. Normally, once, I think, once Brown County Fair has completed, I mean, our staff is gone, they, they start leaving them back to school. So about that second week in August, we are shut down. So whenever that happens, right in there with Brown County Fair. So.
Okay. So there's a loss of about 26 days if we were to open on the 24th hypothetically, about 26 operational days. And there would be a potential of 51 days to be open?
Yep. And, and again, the weather plays a factor into, you know, the usage of the park as well.
Okay. You know, I just, I would love to see the pool open. I understand that there can be a ripple effect with some of the concerns, some of the factors that have been discussed here in this meeting. I don't want to overlook the, the exacerbating loss of money by not being open. The money that fuels the work that Casey and his team at the CVB do to see the pool remain closed through the summer will just have the effect of digging a deeper hole economically. So I, I think for a number of reasons, it would be wonderful to have it open. I am, you know, persuaded by some of the things that you've said here, that just staffing it would be a main concern. If there were any way that we could be, you know, aggressive, assertive to make those kinds of things happen, I would like to see this body approve the money in whatever timeframe we need to. I do think that it's an important jewel for Aberdeen and important asset that we should try to keep operating. But, you know, health is its own risk. I think we need to, of course, respect the virus, but not live in fear of it. As we're making this decision, if it's logistics and that we just can't get the bodies there to operate, that's another thing. But I just want to be on record that I would like to see the pool open if there's any way that we can. Thank you, Alan. I strongly feel that this-
This is something we all, we all like to see the pool open. We would all like to see the world resuming what we used to think was normalcy. But this is not our decision. And a decision has been made by the group that has the opportunity to make that decision. And so on that basis, I move that we adjourn.
Are there any more-
I second.
Are there any more city manager report items, Lynn?
No.
I think there's a motion on the floor, Mayor.
Excuse me?
Sorry.
I've got a motion and a second to adjourn. Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson. Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion. Kerry, we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.